Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session. Calling out Mr. Rivers. River.
Let me raise the microphone slightly, that's better. So, I'm Rivers Ranty, and during the last council meeting on January 7th, I presented my redistricting proposal as an alternative to NAODs. And so, I'm here to answer your questions today. Since Bill Musgrove took questions about NAODs last time, I'm now here to take questions about mine.
Okay, River had already sent those out, so I know you all have an opportunity to look at them. Anybody have any questions for River?
If nobody has any questions, I can go ahead and summarize my map one more time, if anybody would like me to do that.
You may. You got five minutes, you may.
Sir.
Sure.
I covered my questions when I made them.
Sure, yes, that is correct. I did have a chance to meet with Councilman Griffin about a week and a half ago, and we talked for about forty-five minutes about my map, and I enjoyed that. But anyway, just to give a summary of my map one more time, if y'all choose to adapt my proposal, and these are gonna be the differences from NAODs. So District 1 would gain High Street from District 4, and gain areas east of Railroad Avenue from Hermitage Drive, south to the north side of Avondale Street, in addition to gaining Cherry Hill Home Street, Coy Johnson Way, and Prawtine Towery Junior Place from District 3. And District 1 would lose the east side of Old Cloverdale Road to the west side of Norwood Boulevard, which would go to District 5. There are no changes to District 2 from NAOD's proposal. District 3 would gain the north side of Hermitage Drive from east of Royal Avenue, north to Leela Street, to the west side of Dolan Street from District 4. And it would lose Cherry Hill Home Street, Coy Johnson Way, and Prawtine Towery Junior Place to District 1. District 4 would gain the east side of Cott Street Parkway, north to Dresham Road, to the south side of Dresham Road, and east to Beeman Drive, which is currently in District 6. And District 4 would lose High Street to District 1, as well as north of Hermitage Drive to east of Royal Avenue, to District 3. Then District 5 would gain back to the east side of Old Cloverdale Road to the west side of Norwood Boulevard from District 1. Right now, those areas are in District 5, but under NAOD's map, those would move to District 1, so my map would keep those in District 5. And District 5 would lose Casey Lane, Donnelly Lane, Glen Mary Drive, Silverleaf Lane, Summer Lake Court, and Sugar Maple Drive to District 6, and that's the Maple Ridge subdivision. Then District 6 would gain Casey Lane, Donnelly Lane, Glen Mary Drive, Silverleaf Lane, Summer Lake Court, and Sugar Maple Drive from District 5, so District 6 would gain the Maple Ridge subdivision, while District 5 loses it. And District 6 would lose the east side of Cott Street Parkway, north to the south side of Dresham Road, east of Beeman Drive to District 4. And one more note about my map. It raises the percentage of African-American voters in District 1 by about 3% over NAODs. And so, depending on what y'all decide to do, if y'all decide to table the map today, I'll wait before making my closing remarks. But if y'all keep NAOD's map on the agenda, I will make the closing remarks for my map at the council meeting at 5 o'clock, before y'all cast your vote on NAODs. And so with that, if there's no questions, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, River. Ms. Bailey?
We have one item on the agenda. It's gonna be a public hearing, so you have that as item 9, and then 12C is the ordinance. I sent you all a memo. I apologize. We had a death in our family this morning, so I was a little bit behind getting that out to you. So is there any information that I can clarify? I don't know that you've had the opportunity to look at the information in detail. This particular piece of property is on Florence Boulevard. It has been a commercial land use for decades, operating in an R1 zone. That occurred as the result of a legislative act, again, decades ago, and was never brought forward for rezoning. It had been permitted and licensed for a while. But under this particular ownership, the owner desired to have it rezoned, so that it was properly designated. It does conform to the city's complex plan, and there are no issues with the case.
Well, you said that you might just wanna give the public, from the planning commission?
It was recommended unanimously, and there were no comments.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Well, this was property that has never been zoned.
Right, it was the former Gray's Furniture Building, if you're familiar with that area. It's sandwiched between, like, a commercial.
Any questions for?
I looked it up on the board. Is it the building in the property next door is an open line development? Is this just the land next door?
I'm not certain if the same owner also has the property next door. We only saw this because it was a non-conformative use, and the owner desired to rezone it, so that it was properly designated. But as far as the development goes, I don't know. I'm not privy to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, no additional questions?
I do have one question. Prior to it being rezoned, are they privileged to go ahead and work as if it's gonna be rezoned, and just hope that it is?
Yeah, yes. I mean, they can do modifications to the building, provided that they get proper permitting.
Okay, that's like the housing down on Huntsville Road. We approved it on a Tuesday night, and when I drove by the next day, there were five houses already started. And I'm thinking, boy, they're fast. Which they didn't wait to hear this. So what if we'd voted no?
Right. That would be a huge risk. I would assume that there were permits issued prior to it being properly rezoned, so that would be a huge risk. But it would be a risk, if they're willing to take it, what could happen in a case like that? And understanding that permitting does not take place within the planning department. But what you run the risk of is if you begin building either outside of a permitting process, or outside of a rezoning process, you run the risk of not only being fined, but also having to remove any improvements that you made prior to the proper protocol being in place, whatever that happens to be, whether it's permitting, licensing, a rezoning effort, or a combination of the three.
Do you think that happens very often in Florence?
I don't know. We're not on that side of things in planning, so I don't know. You wouldn't need code enforcement if it didn't happen, so it probably happens. And it's probably, you know, not because someone is just being a nuisance or derelict. I'm sure it happens when people don't quite understand what they're required to do. I'm sure there are always bad actors in every city. But, you know, I'm sure there are some that just don't understand the process too.
Which the last meeting, hearing, I asked the question, had Florence ever said no?
Right.
And you said, as far as you can remember, one time.
From my perspective,
Yes.
You know, understanding my purview is not within the permitting realm. It's within the pre-development and planning realm.
That's the part I was talking about.
Right. I can recall, in my twenty, almost twenty-two years with Florence, less than a handful of times that we've had to say no on a particular proposal. But we have always come to the table with an alternative, or have you thought about this? You know, maybe instead of, you know, executing X, let's look at doing, you know, Y, and seeing how, if we can get there.
Okay, thank you. I just thought that was amazing. We approved it on Tuesday, and Wednesday, there were five houses out there.
That's quick. I mean, 3D printing, you never know.
All right, no questions?
Any other questions?
Can you say what's going on? Is it that outdoor store?
It is. Yeah, yeah.
Whatever came of the windmill beverage that we approved out there?
I don't know. I understand that they were putting in proposals in other areas as well. I don't know if they're just waiting.
Right, okay.
Is that where the burner house was?
I'm not certain. I don't know, there wasn't anything.
Is there something down there next to where this is?
Yeah, I believe that particular piece of property was undeveloped.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. Gary?
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Williamson, the building department. I have a resolution to approve payment of an invoice from Professional Fire and Securities for an emergency repair to our fire alarm system here in the building in the amount of $627 that we pay from our budgeted building maintenance funds. I'll answer any questions.
I love the cost.
Sir?
I love that cost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I've just got one item today. It's a change order to Watman and Collins in the amount of $500. And that is for some additional survey for the drainage project in the area of 1902 Greenbrier Road.
Yeah, this is in District 4, and it's been a very, very long time coming. The resident there, I'm guessing, then with this part, we have not had a public works meeting, but we will at the end of the week. You can give us another update, Chaser, Bill can. But there have been some issues with that homeowner, so I'm glad to see we're ready to move forward at this point.
Yes, ma'am. This is one step closer. Any questions? Thank you.
Make a motion to set the change order.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by me. A few things I would like to go over.
Good afternoon. I have one item, item D, 11D. And this is a memorandum of understanding between... Let me provide a little background, and I'll go into what this consists of. So last year, through the state of Alabama, there was an adoption, an amendment to the minimum training requirements for firefighters in the state of Alabama. This covers municipal, any government or military firefighter, any paid position in the state of Alabama. As a minimum requirement, you're required to be state-certified at the firefighter one level. And through this amendment to the minimum training standards, there is an adoption of an additional part that covers sensory inclusiveness. And the state adopted through the legislative branch, and it went through the Fire Commission, and now it's to the Fire College and making its way out to the municipal and government county-run departments. This memorandum of understanding addresses the requirements that I am being charged as a fire chief with maintaining with our employees in order for them to continue to be paid by the city. Not following what I'm about to share with you, which we have other things that are very similar in nature, but it disqualifies them if they don't get this training and then maintain reoccurring training every two years. It disqualifies their firefighter certification, which would immediately in turn mean they can't work for any city, any government, or any military firefighting organization to stay. So included in this, I'm gonna read this purpose of this agreement. And they have partied with Culture City. I don't know if you all remember, earlier last year, or early in 2024, Florence PD brought a similar program to you all that was being taught and sponsored by Culture City that's based out of Estadia Hills. And this is kind of piggybacking off the same thing. It's made its way to the fire service. But the purpose of this agreement, the mission statement of Culture City's sensory-inclusive movement is to create sensory-inclusive spaces that provide universal accessibility for any person with sensory issues to include individuals with autism, post-traumatic stress disorder, Parkinson's, obsessive-compulsive disorder, attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, and others. And basically, what this training is, I'm charged with, or we're charged, the city, with signing this MOU saying they're gonna provide the training for us at no cost, there's no expense to the city of Florence at all. We agreed to receive the training under their guidelines, follow the certification procedure, and I'm, or we, as a city, are signing to say, we understand if we don't continue this and maintain it, it will revoke our employees' license that affords them the opportunity to be paid in the state of Alabama. So we have, although that sounds real big and serious, we have other things that do the same, that have the same result. We have a system to track and monitor this and continue the training. The plan for this is later in the summer, they recruit school. A new firefighter currently, we're about to send three. We've just recently hired three and about to start the academy. They will have six months after they complete the academy to get this training, in order to retain their certification that they were just awarded by completing the academy. By the summer, the Alabama Fire Commission is telling us that they will have this training incorporated into the academy itself. So they will actually graduate with a certification, and then we have the two-year window before we have to do the reoccurring training. So as far as maintaining the training and doing the logistics of that, we have a system to track and monitor that, and no problem. I just have to get this MOU signed that says, we understand that they're what the training requirement is, they're willing to offer the training, and all of the things needed, we're willing to partake in it. And I understand, as chief, that we have a responsibility as an organization to keep our people trained at the park. And that's it in a, that's a 10,000-foot view of it.
Will the trainer, will the trainer come to you?
The training is presented in an online format. Each, we can actually participate in the training in group sessions. It's video that you log into. There's a whole credentialing thing that we'll be going through. But the testing of that is an individual, one-by-one basis. It's an online, basically like any college institution or anything like that. You have a portal that you log into as a student. You have to successfully complete the exam.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chief, so who, we are doing the MOU with Culture City, but were they located and found to do this by the state?
The state did. The state contracted with them. There is an expense to doing this training, and it's being grant-funded.
Okay.
No money's passed through our pockets with the city of Florence. It's all handled with the state.
Right, and so they will then manage this training, and you will then readapt it every two years, if we continue, if the state continues to stay with this group?
That's correct.
And did I understand you to say they're from Estadia, Alabama?
They're based out of Estadia, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Hello, everyone. First item I have, this is a replacement for the roof at Pope's Tavern Museum. This is something, while it is not leaking right now, we want to get it replaced before it does. The roof that's on there was installed in 2006. The expense for that was $48,000. It's cedar shake. The underlayment, however, is inconsistent. There's a combination of plywood and metal that makes up the underlayment throughout the building. So this quote in this bid will remove all the existing shingles, replace all the underlayment, build that up with a consistent surface before putting felt drip-aided shingle on that. The shingle we're looking to replace with is a fiberglass shingle that replicates the look of shake, but gives us a 50-year warranty, so a little bit more durable.
You answered my question?
Yep, good. Next one. This is for lighting at the Rosenbaum House. We have been trying to upgrade the exterior lighting at all of our facilities, and this is just kind of part of that process. Right now, we have outdated lighting that is not working. We'd like to standardize that and provide some visibility for people who are there at night. We have programs, and for people who wander in to take photographs of the property at night, we want it to be lit up.
So we're talking surrounding the home, not on the home itself?
Correct. But it will be lighting up the facade of the home.
Right, but it won't be installed on the house?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm reading the letter you sent. This is contract charges for professional services at the Rosenbaum House in the amount of $44,802. Was that supposed to be for the roof?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that is, that's for the roof.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good deal. So how much is the lighting?
$7,025.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that's up lighting, not down lighting?
Correct.
Because it shouldn't bother you that it's around it?
Correct.
Y'all have any additional questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Good afternoon. I have four things on the agenda this afternoon. Pretty simple, I hope. Grouse &amp; Sons Plumbing is the first contract. This is for work at the recycle center with the toilets and some urinals that just need to be fixed back up. Second item, Articulate Parker Equipment Company. They handle the street department and repaired the Scotsman ice machine. $1,037.02. The next one is Sunfire Alarm Company for putting these badge gates at the new fuel station. These will be used on weekends and evenings after hours. We have a lot of bugs. PD and fire will fuel at odd hours on weekends and stuff, so the gates will stay closed over the normal working hour. So this is a card reader that'll go at the gate, make automatic gate, swipe the card, come in and fuel it, and then it'll close after the leak.
David, on that one, you mentioned this at our public works meeting, so I just wanted to let everybody know it did go through committee. Will there be a monthly or an annual cost associated with that?
Great question. I'm not, I'm sure there's a monitoring cost with certified. I don't know what that is. I don't remember that, to be honest. I could check on that, let you know. But that's not in this contract. This is just to install them so that we can come in and out. You know, we're working with IT on this to get it. We'll be able to get the data from it, who came in, and what times and all, but I'm not sure there's a monthly charge.
If you will, it's two questions. If you'll just confirm if there is a monthly or an annual charge. Sometimes they do it annually.
Right.
And then who would cover that cost of that, since it is used by all departments?
Yeah, this is a general fund project, so it will be shared among users.
If you'll just confirm that with this in the inbound place.
Okay, we'll do. Finally, here's a general contract with Labella Associates. They're our landfill engineers. They do the engineering on the landfill and then our groundwater monitoring and programs like that. Don't expect a whole lot of money on engineering part of it this next year, but the groundwater is a consistent thing that we do a minimum two events a year. So this is just a general contract for the services associated with any of that stuff that might be necessary.
How many times have we used this company? I know this is at least, what, the third time that we've approached?
Well, we've done, since '12, we've used them. It used to be Joyce Engineering. They got bought out by Labella. And so we've had a contract with them to do a groundwater for even longer than that, actually. It used to be Highland Technical. They did it, and they got bought out by Labella. So they're kind of, I'm a relative company that does all of our solid waste stuff.
Is that who we started with?
Started with Highland Technical and the groundwater, and then we used to have a different gentleman that did the landfill stuff until '12, and then we switched to Joyce Engineering. Now all of that. Any questions on any of this for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tad, cold gas and water. I've got several items on the agenda. We'll start with the True North Geographic Technologies contract. This is a renewal of our contract for $18,750. This is just for our hosting and support to support City Works. This is the company that handles City Works for us. That's to be a paid from account 165100. $18,750.
Isn't that also spread among different departments?
That's correct.
Because several people use City Works?
Yes, that's correct. They, we pay it, and then we seek reimbursement once it's paid. Any more questions on that one? All right, the second one is a contract with Cutter Contracting LLC. This is for, if you looked at the attachment, this is for various services that they can provide. Right now, we do not have the capability to operate within the law to do that. So we're working on getting our people licensed. That's something that, so this would be for, this is a one-year contract. Hopefully, we will have our personnel ready. The laws have kind of changed, and so we're wanting to go back and get reestablished with the Alabama Board of Gas Bidders and Plumbers. And so we're in the process of working on that. It's just gonna take some time for us to get our personnel back licensed and capable of performing these services that we're going to have Cutter do in the meantime. Any questions on that one? All right, third is a contract with Shepherd Services Incorporated. This we placed out for bid. Shepherd was the only responsive bidder. This is, this contract is for multiple services at our water and water plants at our wastewater facility. Piscata service and equipment. This basically allows us, if we have an issue, we can call them. They can come in, they'll come from Theodore, Alabama, pick up whatever we're having issues with. Or if it's scada, they'll send a person out and deal with that. But it's just gonna be a much easier avenue for us to go and get things fixed, instead of having to go through the whole process that we normally go through, so.
Will this be the kind of thing, once we have the new central garage, that that can alleviate some of that?
I'm not really sure, because I know the central garage is kind of general fund, whereas, we're not, this is more like for pumps, motors.
Very specialized equipment.
When I say pumps and motors, I'm referring to electrical pumps and motors, the things that we convey water, wastewater with.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does. I was just trying to understand how those things will work to the benefit of the city.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any questions on these Shepherd Services? All right, next is a quote from Skip's Handy Service. This is for the remodel of the bathroom at the gas operations facility. It's been, we've had this purchase for several years, and it's getting in pretty bad shape, so we thought we could go ahead and go through that. That's $31,420, and of course, all of the scope of the work is attached, as you can look at. Any questions on that? All right, the last thing I have for the agenda is the sewer cost sharing fund application for Marina Bar Florence LLC. This is the application that we discussed in the utilities committee. This is for the proposed extension forced lane along Highway 72 to connect to our sewer system at Sky Park Road. The applicant has submitted for 50% of the cost of the reimbursement of the project, not to exceed $250,000, as laid out in the application itself.
And remind the group again, you mentioned this to utility, but how much his estimates have come back at?
His estimates right now, the interest was, are between $500,000 to $550,000. And of course, he will have to provide, and I say he, the Marina Bar will have to provide documentation receipts of everything that they spend, and in that way, you know, if they spend $420,000, we will only reimburse them, you know, 50% of that. If he spends $550,000, then, you know, it's not to exceed $200,000. So it'll all be based on the receipts and what he keeps up with as his expenses associated with the extension of this vein and lift station. Any questions on that one?
Within the last, longer than a year? Was that in the city limits?
The current property itself that he's going to extend to, yes. He's also got several other properties that he's wanting to annex in. But he's wanting to get this particular property, which includes what I'll refer to as the old galley restaurant. He's wanting to get that up and going in time for boating season this spring. That's his intent. And then he's going to go through the annexation process with the other properties. And of course, he knows, he's been notified that he cannot provide sewer to these other properties until they are annexed. He can only provide sewer to the property that's in the corporate ownership.
And that piece of property is the old boat ramp?
I'm not exactly sure if the boat ramp is on this particular property. I would have to look. I can't remember, to be honest.
It's the old Marina.
Yeah, it's the Marina and the galley.
It's called Silver Shoulder.
Okay, it is the Marina. It's not just the closed boat ramp that's a couple of feet, say 200 feet wide from 72 to the water?
Correct, yes.
It is that one?
If I'm not mistaken.
He's added, he's added a bunch of boat steps there.
He's added, he's added a bunch of boat steps there.
Yes, he's got them all the way back.
But the boats are the water.
Correct.
They're not on the land.
Correct.
So will the process happen on that little piece of land?
Yes, all, every, if you're, if you're leaving Florence, going east on seventy-two, it will be that, basically, from what used to be the old spur station. I think it's a nutrition place now.
Yes.
From that point all the way to the bridge is, is the property that we're referring to. Of course, there's, there's, I think there's five parcels there for them. We're not in the corporate limits, but he's going to annex them.
And he's, he's cleared all those off. It's pretty unified up there.
Also, Mr. Griffin, I asked this question at our utility committee meeting, and we're using the easements to get the pipes to his property.
Yes, to get access to.
Not the unannexed property. Is that where you were going with that?
Yes, which is mostly all of that property.
Correct, yes, sir.
The largest, yes, the largest majority of it is not in the corporate limits currently.
I asked the question a month ago about how long that little piece of property had been in the city. And I don't think anybody could answer that.
And I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have any idea. I just know it's, it's currently in the, in corporate limits, but I don't know how long this means the question.
There you go.
I asked you actually, I can't give you an exact date, but it was annexed sometime between two thousand and four and two thousand and twelve because I remember specifically that Mayor Irons was in office when it was annexed, but I can't remember the exact date.
Do you have a reason why that one small sliver of land was annexed?
It was done by the legislature without any input from the city council, the city.
Because it was actually a state boat dock, so that's why. That answers my question. They just gave it a home.
It was never a state boat dock.
No, it, the city, the, the, the legislature annexed it at the request of the property owner, I guess, but, but they didn't ask the city. Normally, the, normally, the legislature will not annex any property into a city unless the city adopts a resolution requesting it to be annexed. But in this particular case, that step was skipped, and I complained about it to the legislator who pleaded, you know, asked forgiveness rather than permission, so. I'm sure that was the first time that happened.
Thank you.
Any more questions on that? The final thing I have is a change order. This is for Veterans Park, Veterans Park Water and Sewer Improvements. It's in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. This is a deduct. So it changes the new contract to six hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents from the original amount of seven hundred and seven and ninety-two forty. So I don't know if that makes me feel happy.
Yes.
So, uh, a deduct of twenty-one, four fifty-eight, thirty.
I'll make the motion that we accept that.
Sure.
So I close with good news. I close with good news. Any more questions for me?
Ms. Simmons, can I, uh, Ted's still here. I just want to give him.
Let, let me finish with the motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I just want to give a shout out to Ted and his folks for working on this East Lauderdale and Rogersville water project. It has gained lots of good words out in, out in the county, and I appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely.
We've got a good, good group of folks working on it.
I think the maintenance has been very beneficial for everyone, so continue to, we'll continue to work on that and see how that transpires as we move forward, so. Like us.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I know Ted's leaving, but I really do want to thank you for all your help. He's been a tremendous asset working through the Veterans Project, and I could not have ended without him, so thank you.
Will you leave, update us on that today, would you?
Veterans?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're moving on. They worked when it snowed. Um, they're getting the framing done for the tennis clubhouse. So they're, they're moving on, moving on.
I was going to mention that today. There's a building coming up. It looks good.
That's the tennis building, that's great. If they worked when it was snowing out there a couple of weeks ago. So first item we have is item P, and it is an addendum to the MOU that we, um, presented, I don't know, last year for the Alabama Cooperative Extension System. There was some wording in the contract that Mr. Musgrove, um, worked with him on, so this is just the same, uh, MOU, but adding the addendum.
Should that be October first, twenty twenty-four, or is it this upcoming October?
October twenty, did I put twenty-four?
No, it says five.
It's twenty-four, yes, ma'am.
All right, I was like, no.
Well, usually you'll put twenties, for twenty-five, put twenty-four, but this actually should have been twenty-four, yes, ma'am.
Okay, these were minutes that were approved in October.
There were several MOU that y'all had that in mind, and this was one of them, and this is some language that, um, Mr. Musgrove had to change. Next item is item Q, which is another item that, um, I think I presented last time, and this was for the upper courts. Well, this is for the lower courts. Once the upper ones were done and looked so good and, um, made it a, a whole lot more user-friendly, we decided to do the, um, bottom six, and this is for shows pressure washing, so therefore, we're splitting this with Florence City Schools again. So we're into, um, paying, you know, the half of it, but basically, we're just a split for both of us again, and this amount is two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That's our portion.
Uh, that will be split as well, but, yeah, right, that's right.
Are those taped for Pickle On?
I don't think the Cox Creek is.
Okay.
I do not believe so. Next item is item R, and this is, uh, for a contract with Goodman Mills in Kwood. And this is for the engineering design of the parking lot expansion at the Sports Flex. And the amount of this will not exceed seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars.
R says seventy-eight.
Just exceeded it.
Kathy is probably right. My memo says forty, seventy-six. Kathy is probably right.
I bring it with me.
Did you have it on, what does it say for the?
The memo that you sent, said seventy-six.
Memo said seventy-six, but that doesn't mean that is the correct amount.
I'll have to, I'll, I'll check that. Do I, you know, do I need to go check it? Oh, Bob's got the.
I'll tell you what I can do. I can check it between now and when we get started. How about that?
And I can do, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Did this go to the, I, I, I'm excited about an expansion, but did this go through the, um, parking rec committee?
So this was a, this is a budgeted item, so, um, the budget amount is one point two million that we budgeted for, so this.
For overall at the Sports Flex?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So this is the engineering design part of it, which will be included in that one point two million.
Where on the campus are you planning on adding this?
So this will be down there, where, if you know where the maintenance building is, by the new multipurpose field that was just built right in that area.
This is off that subject. Were we involved at all with the UNA field at the old fairground?
Involved as in?
Paying for that?
No, sir.
That is a truly beautiful piece of property there.
We do have use of it, though.
Yeah, and if you drive down Cox Creek, it really catches your eye.
Does. I'll confirm that amount, uh, for the, make sure that one of those is right.
And then, so this is the start of this project?
This will just be the engineering part, yes, ma'am.
And so you want to try to see this through, how, what's your timeline? I know that the Sports Flex gets busy as we get into warmer weather, which today is no good example of that, but, um, what's your timeline to see that to fruition?
Probably s- once they get started, maybe six months. I don't know what, as far as they have to do, as far as removing, you know, the compaction and all that, so. Six months, probably.
And we have gravel now?
No, that it'll be, that'll be, all be part of the construction part of it.
So we don't have any part, okay.
There's trees and just dirt, and it'd just have to be a full, full parking lot area. And I don't know, six months maybe. I'm, hopefully, that's longer than what it'll take, but, so, just taking a guess at it.
And I'd do quite a bit of excavating.
Excavating and compaction and paving, so got to be warned for that.
Should have done this first and used that dirt, veterans.
You're right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That one is good on that one. Thank you.
And I apologize about the amount. I will get that for you in a few minutes. The next one is item S, and this is a contract with Skip's Handy Service, and they're going to replace countertops and sinks in the concession stand at the Sports Flex. And the amount of this is thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. The next one is item T. This again is one that, um, y'all approved back in twenty-four. Um, this is for the payer weather system. If you remember that we were installing at the Sports Flex and at BlackBerry. Again, there were some legal things that went on, so Mr. Musgrove made some changes. So basically, everything is the same except for that language in the contract. On item T and U.
I was going to say that affects both of those items.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right, I will get that number for you here in just a second.
Do you have any additional questions?
Oh, you're okay. It's, I'll, I'll check for it. Yes, no problem.
Did you go out on purpose?
The resolution says seventy-six four.
Okay, that's a couple of, it should be seventy-six, okay.
Seventy-six four hundred.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Musgrove?
Good afternoon. Um, I'll start with the request for an attorney general's opinion. Uh, this has to do with, well, it's a request, um, from the attorney general to, uh, provide the city with an opinion about whether a couple of sections of the state constitution prohibit municipalities from, uh, compensating employees during inclement weather when they can't work, hourly employees. That's, the, the city of Florence ha- doesn't have a formal written policy about inclement weather, with city hall being closed or any other offices. But in the past, typically, uh, the people who were not able to work, um, were allowed to take a vacation day. And there are certain other cities and counties in the area that have varying policies, and so this is a clarification for the future to determine, uh, whether the city could, could provide some type of compensation. Not, not that the city is planning that, but we needed some clarity before, in my opinion, we need, we need an opinion from the attorney general as to whether it even can be considered before we, before the city would consider that. So that's, and, and the state law requires that the city council request the opinion.
So, Mr. Musgrove, this would supersede the original idea that employees would take a vacation day? Is that accurate?
No, ma'am. It, this, this is just a question about whether that could be changed. What, what, it, this is to determine whether there is the option of providing some type of compensation other than a vacation day. If, if an hourly employee isn't able to work because of inclement weather, a closure.
And so you're saying too, that other communities and municipalities have other ways to handle this?
Well, some of them, some of them put the certain employees on paid administrative leave and whatnot, and, um, and I just think that it's prudent to get an opinion from the attorney general. Section ninety-four of the state constitution says, uh, no public funds can be spent on a private per, or for a private purpose or individual. And I think that that's, could potentially prohibit paying employees if they're not able to work, hourly employees. And secondly, there's section sixty-eight of the state constitution states that you can't compensate government employees for work that's already been performed, which is just part of the constitution that prohibits government entities in Alabama from paying bonuses. And so I asked the, the opinion, asked the attorney general about section ninety-four and section sixty-eight as it relates to, uh, inclement weather days or emergencies where the offices are closed and employees either can't make it safely or are told to stay home. But it doesn't set a policy. It's just information so that the mayor and council can, uh, can look at it and make a decision for the future.
Right, so it's not setting a policy. It's just opening a pathway to create that policy where, for instance, the city could even build in inclement weather days.
Correct.
Like school systems do.
Correct. I just want to, I, I just think it's, again, I just think that it, it's wise to ask for an opinion from the attorney general before we implement any, before the city would implement anything like that, so. Is this, um, a recent conversation with the state, or is this just something that has often asked questions and it was already there and easy to find? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't. Did you get this interpretation recently? No, this is just my, I, I just, these, these have been in the state constitution since not long after nineteen oh one. I mean, these are old provisions. And the, basically, it stems from the fact that the city of Florence has never paid employees to stay home. And, or I, I say never, not to my knowledge. It's been the city's unwritten policy, the city hall never closes, et cetera, et cetera. So other cities and counties in the area have policies that provide pay for certain employees under certain circumstances. And it's my legal opinion that these two constitutional provisions could prohibit that, and I just think it's wise if we ask the attorney general first before, before the city considered implementing another program that would provide some type of extra snow days or something. Of course, his opinion supersedes the Alabama League of Municipalities, but I talked to them this week, and they did not feel like these particular articles were about snow days. But it reminded me of that commercial on TV where this lady's petting her cat, and off the stage, you hear a child go, "I failed! Get a Band-Aid." "I bleeding." Get to more in word than in deed. And so I would like to propose to this council that we d- design, like you just said, three days of severe weather, and if you surpass that, you have to go back to what is unwritten that says that you must take a vacation. Doesn't say to sick day, does it? That's not allowed. Okay, okay. And that's not for this minute, but that's just my opinion, Bob, to see where this, where this would go.
Yeah, well, that's a, you know, it's a good thought, and it, but it hinges on the interpretation of what he just quoted to us. If public funds can be used for something like that, and I guess when we get the opinion, uh, we'll, we can look into that.
Correct, and, and I did. I talked to the, um, chief legal counsel at the League of Municipalities, and his opinion was that these two constitutional provisions absolutely prohibit it.
What did we do during COVID, remind me?
We're from over here. We, we never closed.
I couldn't remember, but that's right when we took office.
Right, right.
Mr. Musgrove, would this be something that Human Resources will also need to be involved in with the attempts?
Absolutely.
Right, thi- this opinion is just simply asking that section ninety-four of the constitution do section ninety-four and sixty-eight prohibit paying hourly employees if they don't work. And if the attorney general says no, I also asked in the opinion that the attorney general would, uh, provide if it's, if we can, if the city is able to do something like that, if they would give us some guidelines about, uh, about how the city could do it and, and stay in compliance with the law. But once, I mean, the HR and the mayor, I'll, I will, uh, get out of it at that point. I'm just asking the attorney general. I don't, I'm, I won't have anything to do with what the policy is, so. But yes, HR would definitely be involved, just me. I was just under the impression that if the city, or we'll say the police say the roads are impassable, that just means we're not supposed to pass them.
that just means we're not supposed to pass them. And so I just wonder about telling our employees to get on the road that's closed and they have a wreck, and then we say, file that on your insurance, and if you die, I'm really sorry. I made you come to work anyway.
Well, what the mayor, the email the mayor sent out this past time advised the department has to tell their employees to err away on the side of caution and do not come in if you feel like it's unsafe. And, I mean, I understand that the vacation day is incentive to try to come in, but, but anyway, if this comes back in the positive, then the HR and the mayor and the council can, can implement something like that.
I appreciate you already digging and bringing that to us.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Look forward to hearing what he said.
Thank you. And then the other item that Mr. Lighty has on the agenda that I'm up here doing his job for him about is the, are the voting districts, so.
Mr. Musgrove, we cannot, what we did not have immediate consent on last week, we vote exactly on that.
Correct.
There is not another debate?
Well, there can be a debate, yes, absolutely, but if the, if the ordinance were to change any, then it would need immediate consent again. I mean, I mean unanimous consent for immediate consideration to vote on it at this meeting. But if you vote on the exact same ordinance, then it does not need, it's already been read once essentially, so it can just be voted on tonight. But if we, but if any changes are made to it, then we'll have to start over, for lack of a better way to say it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
But there, there can be discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just like, yeah, just like.
I was under the impression we couldn't.
Can discuss, just, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, just like any ordinance, this would be like when the council president asked for, if we, if unanimous consent is granted, then someone will make a motion for the approval of the ordinance, and if someone seconds it, then the president calls for discussion, so that would be the same thing. After a motion and second is made is when the discussion would come.
On what's already been presented for tonight?
Ma'am?
On what's already been presented?
Correct, that's correct, yes, ma'am. And then if, and if any changes were to be made, then we would draft a new or, or amended ordinance that would come back up, probably it would have to wait until the next meeting if we did an amendment. It's just, it's a practical matter. I don't think we, I could draft it during the meeting, so. Maybe Mr. Lighty could. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Mayor.
I have five items, three on the consent and two on the regular agenda. The, the three on the consent agenda are appropriations that were a part of our general fund budget this year. One is for ten thousand dollars for the homeless care council. That's V. W is twenty-five thousand dollars for one place in the Shoals, and the county matches that with us each year. And the third is for the Northwest Alabama Regional Airport, and that's for twenty-five thousand dollars. Any questions?
Do you know, I'm sorry. Do you know if any other cities make that appropriation to the airport?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, I would.
I understand that you wouldn't know that. I'd stop maybe top of the mayors.
I mean, that would be a question, I think, Barry Griffiths, you know, is the legal manager.
Yes, manager. Thank you.
All right, twelve D is the fourth installment of the five-hundred thousand dollars for UNA for their new computer science and mathematics building. Any questions? And twelve E is putting the item for the demolition of the deck back on the agenda. The contractor who won the bid gave us until the end of January all that in its form, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two sixty-eight-five.
Mayor, why is this back? We voted it down last time.
We voted it down?
It was a three.
I thought, I thought it'd been requested to put it back on the agenda.
I did not request.
I, I mentioned putting it back on there, because I had understood there may be some people who have changes of heart about it, so.
I think the question I had had to do, and I apologize if that came from me, because I got clarification from Shayna that it was not covered then by the fifteen million dollar bond issue we took out for the new deck. So that means that about two-hundred, two-twenty-five of it is going to have to come out of the general fund. And my question then became, you know, we still don't know what's going to happen with that property, and how did we get a deck fifty percent over the price? So those were my concerns, so I don't have any reason to bring it back, me personally. And I thought, based on our last meeting, that it had to have been someone who voted it down last time to ask for it to come back. If I misunderstood that, Mr. Musgrove, please correct me.
Well, it just needs to be someone, someone who voted against it last time needs to make the motion to approve it.
Oh, during the meeting itself, not to ask to have it put back on there?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's all on the work session agenda. We will take, if nothing else, we'll take a quick five-minute break, and we'll come back and get started.